I'd like to call a little order, the 7:30 PM Town Council Meeting for March 5th. Would everybody join me in the Fudge of Allegiance, please? Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Councilor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilor Donovan?
Here.
Councilor Katerina?
Here.
Councilor Blay?
Here.
Councilor Benedict?
Here.
Chairman Sullivan?
Here. Okay, I'm going to start this off with public comments, three minutes, limited to eight o'clock, and name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Paul Austin, Three Tide Mill Lane, Scarborough. I'm the current president of the Board of the Scarborough Land Trust, and first of all, I'd like to invite the council and the public to our annual meeting, which is next Thursday, the 13th, at seven o'clock in these chambers. I know that you've all received a card, reminder card about that. We're going to talk about a number of things at the annual meeting. One of those is a historical presentation on Benjamin Farm, which is a big project that we're working on now that I'm sure you're all aware of. Another thing that we're going to introduce is a white paper that we did on conservation as an economic engine. I believe you have copies of that in front of you now that Tom passed out. We have been thinking about this for a little while, and we worked on it last winter, and we finally have it in a presentable form, and I wanted to show it to the council before it's presented publicly at the meeting. There are many ways that conservation provides an economic benefit to a community. For example, property values in a community that has open space and recreation land tend to be higher. Certainly, any property that's near recreation space has a higher value. The Growth and Services Report from 2000 that the town of Scarborough did indicated that each residential unit in the town costs the town $1,200 a year, which is a pretty astonishing figure when you think of it. But Broad Turn Farm, when we start to think about it, was a very interesting example of how conservation can contribute to the economy. As you know, the Scarborough Land Trust owns Broad Turn Farm, and we have a fairly unique lease, a 30-year lease with Stacy Brenner and John Bliss to lease the farm, and they run an organic farm there. Our partnership with them allows them to operate a farm in an urban area where they wouldn't be able to operate. They wouldn't be able to afford to buy a farm in this area, it just would be impossible. It's very easy to buy a farm in potato country, but then you don't have any market, so there's some real disadvantages. So this has been a really wonderful, wonderful possibility for both of us. We have highest and best use of a great deal of the farm property, and they have an economical place to have a business. When we started thinking about this, Broad Turn Farm is really, it's a unique operation, and they're excellent businessmen, and they're doing a really great job. But they actually have a number of businesses that happen on the farm. One of them is their Community Support Agricultural Program. They have 200 shares this year for the first year, so 200 families or units of people can pre-buy agricultural products. They sublease farmland to the Snell Family Farm, and that's half of the property that Snell's till is at Broad Turn Farm, and John is quick to say it's the best half of the land they till, too. They have a wedding business with 10 weddings a year. They have a floral design business. They employ, as you can see here, they have six or seven people that work just on the floral design business. They do three events a week on average. They're very, very busy, and they grow in the summer most of the flowers they use. They have a farm stand, a serve-yourself farm stand. They barter for hay with a couple of neighbors, and they have a farm camp there, which is an educational camp for kids. And the really interesting thing, when you drill down through this, is, as you can see from this chart, there's a direct financial benefit to 81 or more people. Those are people that derive, in some cases, six or seven months of income from the farm. A few people derive full-term income, but it's a tremendous economic benefit to the town. Their customers, just in round numbers, are about 760 people that contribute to the various programs. They have a wedding, they belong to CSA Share, they send their kids to the farm camp, they buy flowers. And then, interestingly, there's a direct benefit to 4,935 people that directly benefit from the events and the activities at that farm. So that includes wedding guests, the average of 1.75 children in each family that has a CSA Share. It's the people that get produce from Snell Family Farm, they're active, very active in three farmers' markets in the Portland area. It's the 300 kids that go to farm camp every year. So I just wanted to give you copies of this and talk about this, to show you what you got for your money when you invested in Broad Turn Farm. We're extremely lucky to have that facility, and we're even more lucky to have John and Stacy as the tenants there. They're amazing farmers, and they welcome the community, and I'd urge any of you to go to the farm in the summer. You won't believe how busy it is and what's going on there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Next.
Good evening. Katie Foley, Three Lucky Lane. I wanted to start with a thank you to all of you for slowing down enough to really kind of take all of the committee's recommendations and process them, listen to the vote that took place in December. I think, I still am going to stick with what Jessica said a few meetings ago, and it has stuck with me, and I think she said it best. This is certainly not something that everyone in this room is going to love. I'm sure we're going to get emails tomorrow. You'll get some, I'll get some, but I do think it represents significant compromise and a thoughtful approach. I think, I encourage you to stay open, because I think they're problematic in terms of the parking lots. For me, those are a very clear delineation of where you can separate and educate in a way that's going to be most mindful. So stay open to the comments that continue to come in. I did just want to throw out a couple more pieces that, as I was listening to your discussion, kind of came to mind, and I think if you're going to move forward with the inquiry around the portions of the beach to the north and to the south of Scarborough Beach, and I can tell you that those were included, because there is history of plover nesting at both ends of that beach, and those private beaches are not included. So equally, consider also inquiring about the possibility of delisting Ferry Beach, because it qualifies under those qualifications that they have listed. And I've provided Tom and everyone with that information of what that means. Kind of to one of the points that Jessica was saying, or might have been Bill, around people getting out of their cars and just letting their dogs go. I think that could be something that you work into the language. I think dogs should be on leashes when they get out of the car until you get down to the area where they can be off, and I think the same should be true probably of the paths, especially if those at Prime Point where it's most problematic and could be closer to nesting areas, so that's something to also consider. I don't know what the number is for you. Jessica, the magic number for at-large, but I will say it's something you need to dive a little deeper into. When you look at the dog data I provided, it was certainly the largest percentage of animal calls that our animal control officer was dealing with. In terms of language, I know in the minority report I also included, and it was strong suggestion from the attorneys that we've consulted along the way, is to be careful to write the new ordinance in a way that is restrictive and not permissive in its manner. That will also offer the town additional protection. And then lastly, I just wanted to say that, you know, the vast majority of this dogs group and myself are still very committed to being a long-term partner to the town, and we want to work with you, and I'm glad that we've come to this place, so thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Elaine Richard, Five Brief Lane, 28 East Grand Ave. I just want to echo what was said, that thank you very much for the off-leash time. It's really very important. I don't have a dog, but I enjoy seeing them, and I think this is great. The one thing that I would, a couple of things I'd mention. First of all, in the co-op beach, with the change in the ordinance, is there really a reason to have the co-op beach become a dog-free beach? And I think we've got a, two things that were not mentioned that you have to take into consideration. One, are the tides, which make it almost impossible at certain times of the day or year for that beach to be even used. The second and most important part is the parking. Parking for the rising tide, for the co-op, for the people who have got boats, they need like two spaces to do that in. So if you make something a dog-free beach, you have to provide parking, and there isn't really anything there. So I think you want to give that some consideration. When you talk about beach access and signage, that's great, because again, on East Grand Ave, going from East Grand to the beach, there is no signage, and I think that's going to help a great deal. One of the problems I do see is the signage that I don't think can be put, and that's between the two beaches, Old Orchard and Pine Point. When you cross that line in the sand, and it's a line in the sand, because there's no other way to put it, there is no way to indicate that you have now gone into another beach. We can have a new sign on the road, and I've talked to Tom Hall about that new sign, maybe going up, but on the beach itself, when you talk about monitoring, is that part of the monitoring, to make sure that people who have dogs from Old Orchard, and they're walking across, and it's 9:30 in the morning, and they can keep their dogs on the beach until 10:00, they don't realize that they have crossed into another beach? So I think that the ongoing committee would have to be thinking about that particular aspect. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm going to close the public comments section in the meeting. Okay, closed. Okay, acceptance of the February 19th regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
Okay, there are none. Treasurer's warrants, I just signed them. Non-action items. We have a presentation from the Transportation Advisory Committee.
The Bacon Town Planner has been elected to point to speak on behalf of the committee, though I do notice two members of the committee in the front row, and of course, Council Chair Sullivan has been the council liaison right along.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Town Council. As mentioned, I've been nominated to provide a presentation to you from the Transportation Committee on their work on a proposal for intersection improvements that Oak Hill focused on pedestrian and safety improvements at the intersection. Committee has been working away for over a year, I think closer to two years now, after the council established a transportation committee with the chief's first initiative to look at the Oak Hill intersection and the surrounding area with an eye towards making pedestrian improvements and safety improvements. And the committee's been using some past studies as guides in their process. The townwide transportation study back in 2005, the Oak Hill intersection study in '06, and most recently, the pedestrian plan from 2011. And it's pretty remarkable, given, it's pretty remarkable about how much has already been accomplished in this area in light of the 2011 pedestrian plan, and it's really been a collective effort to date. As you approved last year, and as you observed in the fall, some major improvements were made to Black Point Road. Sidewalks were added by the town on the west side, and by private development on the east side in front of the assisted living facility. Coupled with that initiative, the crosswalk improvement was done down at the Eastern Road in Black Point. It's 90% complete, but the 10% is a pretty key one that will be done this spring, and that's adding some signalized crosswalk there, so pedestrians can actuate a crosswalk lights and have a lot more visibility and safety in crossing. So that's been done by the town just this past fall. Also, this past fall and winter, Bitterford Savings Bank, that project has installed crosswalks at Hannaford Drive and Route 1, and some sidewalks along Route 1 in Centerville will be doing that when they come forward with their office project. And looking forward, the school department has committed to and will be installing an improved crosswalk at Hannaford Drive, its crossing of Gorham Road, which is a pretty important crossing, particularly for schoolkids going to and from the campus over to Hannaford Drive and Oak Hill Plaza and beyond. And lastly, Main DOT has awarded the town significant funding to further the sidewalk and pedestrian initiative up Gorham Road to Sawyer Road. There's a couple important sidewalk extensions there, one from the library up to Sawyer Road. Another is the Oak Hill Plaza side of Gorham Road between Hannaford Drive and the intersection. And DOT found the town worthy of that funding under the Safety at School program. So that's looking to be moving forward probably a year or two from now. And so there's a pretty diverse partnership of, and funding sources to really further this area as a more walkable place and a safer place for kids to get into school and people walking around.
If I could just interject and make a key point, just for the benefit of council, this is a great example of where investment in plans and planning produces this sort of result, and we don't need to use all-town funds to do it. So by virtue of the fact that we had good, solid plans in place, we're able to impress upon private development applicants the need to do these things. It ranks us much higher for competitive, very competitive grant funding, so we very much appreciate your support of these studies that end up, this is the fruits of that labor.
All right. Thanks, Tom. And really, the key piece at this point, looking at that map on the past slide, and I realize it's a small map, given where you're seated, so I apologize for that, but what remains is, a key linkage is the ominous Oak Hill intersection, just given its size and the traffic that moves through it. It's an intimidating place for pedestrians to cross, but it's an important linkage for the Eastern Trail and the neighborhood to the south along Black Point Road, and the new sidewalks along Black Point Road, thinking to really the end destinations being the town campus, the schools, Oak Hill Plaza, and those businesses, and the majority of destinations really being on the other side of Route 1. So that's, over the past year, what the committee's really been focused on, is figuring out what is the right balance of pedestrian improvements that make it more appealing to get across Route 1, safer to get across Route 1, but not, you know, hinder traffic by doing it, and not taking out multiple lanes to make it a perfect crossing for pedestrians. So the committee's been really looking at that balance. They've been looking at other needed safety improvements around the Oak Hill intersection. There's some high crash locations that have existed for a number of years, and in this package of proposals, there's a few adjustments that we think will improve those high crash locations. And as a final element, the committee's been looking at, okay, is there ways to make the intersection just more attractive and also better for stormwater, safer on the environment, given that intersections are known for high pollution levels, given that there's always a lot of cars queued up waiting to move through the intersection. That's where on roadways, the most pollutants enter the road system. So after a lot of discussion and advice from our traffic consultant, the town engineer, and a lot of debate at committee level, this is the package of improvements that the committees like to recommend to you. First and foremost, to put in some improved crosswalks. Currently, there are two crosswalks today. One goes from Amato's to the gas station across the street, being, I think it's Mobile, they change pretty yearly. And then, there's a crosswalk today from Mobile over to Walgreens. The committee's looked at this a lot, and feels that there also should be one from the Sitco Station to Walgreens, given the new sidewalk at the assisted living facility and some other destinations to the south along Black Point Road. So this shows those three crosswalks. It also shows shorter new protection islands that can provide more safety for a pedestrian or more comfort for pedestrians crossing the roadway, because there's some curbed, narrow medians within Route 1 and then also Gorham Road. The other key element here is the idea of basically combining the right turn lane that exists today with through right, meaning, actually eliminating the right turn lane that exists along Walgreens and making the right through lane a through right, if that makes sense, for two reasons, but in this particular instance, one key reason would be to make it a shorter crossing for pedestrians. What actually also helps motorists, because it shortens the length of red time that you're using for pedestrians to cross. That right turn lane's been studied quite significantly, and it's used at a very low rate compared to all the other lanes in the intersection, and it's a pretty redundant turn lane because of Hannaford Drive and also motorists' ability to use Oak Hill Plaza for different movements. So it's not a critical lane, and it's also not used a fraction of the time compared to all the other lanes in the intersection. Another improvement the committee's recommending is dynamic no right-on-red signs when someone's in the crosswalk. This wouldn't prohibit a motorist from taking a right on red when someone's not in the crosswalk, but when someone's using a crosswalk, often a motorist isn't looking at pedestrians, they're looking to see if they can take a right. So having a lit sign that lights up in your line of vision's a key to both motorist safety and, most importantly, pedestrian safety. The elimination of the right turn lane along Walgreens, frontage there, also could be used for stormwater treatment. We've been looking at, I mentioned the pollutant loading at the intersection, the runoff of the road runs towards that curb line, there's already catch basins there, and there's a nice opportunity to actually provide some stormwater treatment in that what would be a new esplanade area, which can benefit ultimately the watersheds in the marsh that it drains into. So that was sort of a creative and, a creative way to use that esplanade for something more than just green space, it could be stormwater treatment. Coupled with this is the proposal to construct a shorter length of sidewalk that could complete the linkage from the assisted living facility that went on Black Point Road. They built a sidewalk, but they didn't build it all the way to the intersection. The Sitco Station does not have a sidewalk along it, so this would complete that sidewalk connection up to the intersection. I mentioned earlier, safety for motorists, and one of the two higher accident areas in Oak Hill is the driveway in and out of the Sitco Station on Black Point Road. It's a very problematic driveway, it's tricky to get in and out of, particularly in the commuter hour, there's a lot of crashes associated with it. We looked at a lot of different alternatives here and decided on really a narrowing and kind of realigning of the driveway, so it's not as broad. Motorists need to be more deliberate about going in and out, and if it's narrower, some that are trying to take a left in a busy time of day might think twice before they go out that way. And also, there's a little island there to channelize motorists, so that they're using it properly, not cutting across the driveway. So this is kind of coupled with the sidewalk improvements, but an important safety improvement for folks using that driveway. The other safety improvement was, is proposed by the committee is to have what we're calling a textured center island. It would be mountable, drivable, down between the fire station and the Oak Hill intersection, much like the concrete textured surface that's on the other side of the intersection in front of McDonald's in Orolburg. The accident problem that's occurring is motorists are using that center left turn lane inappropriately as a travel lane, trying to get up to the left turn lane while other motorists are coming out of side streets and causing an accident. This has been identified as, by the committee, as something to improve upon, so having a surface that's not comfortable to drive on can cut down those speeding down the left turn lane, and we think will lessen that likelihood of a collision there. And lastly, there's, the committee's talked about having just street lighting at each corner of the intersection to provide more light to the intersection in the evening hours, both for motorists and pedestrians. Right now, it's dimly lit, it's not well-lit, both for those using the crosswalk, but just as importantly, cars traveling through the intersection. These three more aerial, or, well, one's a bird's-eye view and street view, rather, perspectives kind of illustrate what the intersection could look like with some of these improvements. And one view is from, the larger view is from Amato's looking across towards Walgreens. The upper right view is looking from the Mobile Station towards the Walgreens. And lastly, we wanted to present next steps. Tonight is a key presentation for the committee to the council, so you can present what they've been working on and get your feedback, following feedback and any adjustments. The budget process is beginning in the next month or two. Last year, the council actually approved a CIP for funding for this intersection, and that was when there wasn't a sidewalk and some of these other safety improvements that have now been folded in. So we will be coming forward with an additional CIP to enable the entire project to move forward at the same time, and it happens to be about the same amount of money the town actually currently has in our impact fee accounts from impact fees that are assigned to new development that go through the planning board process. So this is eligible to be used by, for impact fees rather than bonding or town expenditure by the taxpayers. So that's an important point, putting the impact fees to work that have been collected over the years. In addition to the CIP step, based on some feedback that we get from the council, we would need to coordinate with DOT on the design and then enter into the final design stage for the project, and the thinking would be there's adequate time to design in May and June and be in a position to implement these improvements after the summer busy season, potentially in September, October, if that was the wishes of the council and the town manager.
Yeah, I just, we're sensitive to construction fatigue. We've all, in this town, have all lived through endless seasons, it seems like, all five years I've been here. We've had parts of Route 1 under varying degrees of construction, so though we may be ready, it's physically possible for us to complete the work this fall, we may wish to push some of that off this spring, just to give people a break, frankly, but that's a point we can talk about. But that's a point we can talk about.
So that concludes my presentation, and Steve and Ron are here from the committee, and be happy to answer any questions you have.
Also, as you mentioned, Jim Wendell, town engineer, is here and has been active and a part of the whole process right along.
Is there any questions? Yet? Questions? Nope. Okay, thank you.
Richard, let me just ask.
Yep.
Dan, I mean, one of the things that I, I mean, this is the best town I've ever seen that could benefit from some greater curb appeal at Oak Hill. And you mentioned greening up the area. I would think a more aggressive plan that addresses landscape, streetscape, trees, to soften the intersection, I think that it would do wonders. And I think that, and I think it would be very well received in the town, by the, by the community.
Yep. The committee's talked a fair amount about that, and it's like with Dunston Corner and the Higginson Parkway intersection, we've tried to add some greenery and softening the intersection while also balancing the maintenance obligations and the cost, ongoing cost of maintaining the infrastructure. So that's kind of that balancing act of making it more attractive, but being able to afford to maintain it and maintain it well. So the raised islands would be landscaped like those other intersections, they're shorter islands though, so that maintenance doesn't go on too many linear feet. And the idea with the stormwater facility along Walgreens is that it would be a landscaped stormwater system that's more contemporary in style, and some tree plantings. So, and the committee, I think, can talk more about, you know, additional street trees, if that's something the council wishes us to do, certainly.
All these matters will come before the finance committee in detail through the CIP requests, and certainly encourage you all to be part of that conversation, and ultimately, should we be successful at that level, will come to you as part of the budget proposal.
All right, thank you, Dan.
Yeah. Order number fourteen dash thirteen is a seven thirty public hearing and second reading on the proposed amendments to chapter four oh five, the zoning ordinance to repeal contracts on District Four between the Town of Scarborough and Harold P. Burnham II.
Okay, open the public hearing on order number fourteen thirteen. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on the order? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed?
Under new business, order number fourteen twenty-four is first reading and refer to the planning board, the proposed amendment to chapter four oh five, the zoning ordinance to add historic preservation and wildlife review standards to enable municipal capacity of DEP site law review.
Dan Bacon will be presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm going to provide introduction really to order fourteen twenty-four through twenty-six. They're all a package together, and they all have similar language, they're just the three different land use ordinances that the planning board administers, the zoning ordinance, the site plan review ordinance, and the subdivision ordinance. And this is before you, because the town is interested and has applied for what's called municipal capacity of the DEP site location permitting process. Site location or site laws, it's called by the development community, is the DEP review process for larger development projects, large commercial projects, larger subdivisions. And it's a process that really covers a lot of the same review criteria that the planning board does in the town's development review process. And it's, it's an important review process, but it's probably more important for communities that don't have the same level of ordinances and review as Scarborough. And it can be pretty time consuming and expensive for applicants to go through. And so, given the comprehensive nature of our ordinances and our planning board's abilities and our engineering review abilities, we felt the town is in a pretty good position to apply for and receive what's called municipal capacity, which is allowed by the state. And basically, the state finds that your ordinances are equal to and serve the same purposes as the site law review. And so, we've applied for this in September as a way to streamline development review, to eliminate some duplication occurring at the state level and the town level, and to encourage development in our growth areas. And DEP has reviewed our ordinances as well they are. We do have the capacity, they are entitled to municipal capacity with a few adjustments. And that's what's before you tonight on these three orders, are those few adjustments. And they center around our review of historic resources, historic and archaeological sites and buildings, et cetera. And for larger projects, they also focus on giving the main inland fisheries and wildlife department a chance to comment on larger projects, which they already do under site law. And so, I felt this was fitting too, given the historic committees, all their recent work on historic preservation, and it's good timing in that regard. And so, to this end, what you have before you are essentially the same amendments to those three ordinances that say that development projects should check and identify whether they have historic resource within their development project. And they would check the town's comprehensive plan, the main historic preservation commission's list, and then any list the town might have. And I know there was a list presented at your last meeting, it's not an official list yet, but it could become the town's list of historic properties. And then they check to see if their project contains any of those resources. And then they're asked to see if there's a way to preserve those resources part of the project, but it's not a requirement. They can check and see, and if it's not feasible, they can indicate that to the planning board after doing some homework on it, and then choose not to preserve it. But it's just a step along the way to see if it's possible and to also just recognize that they have such a resource. So, in a nutshell, those are the amendments before you. And with adoption of these changes, then the town would be in a position to have municipal capacity, and then applicants wouldn't be going to the state for that, that step at DEP. And I thought it was important to note that, under site law, that isn't DEP review of wetland filling or impacts to critical wildlife or endangered wildlife habitat, that kind of thing. So that review still happens at the state, that's not something the town can get authority on. So from an environmental standpoint, we still have those environmental protections and those steps at the state level. And I guess as a final note, long range planning committee has reviewed this, and also just last night, the historic preservation committee reviewed the proposal and had some, we worked on a slight adjustment to the language in light of comments last night, that's before you this evening.
We apologize, but what was distributed this evening, which I believe captures the input from the historic preservation group last night.
Correct.
So we apologize for kind of the late, lateness of it, but it makes sense for you to consider that version in first reading, so you can get this process started, you know, on the right foot.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Do we have a motion?
Public comment?
Um...
What's that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I missed that. All right. Yep, sorry.
Well, this is why I came down here, and I, I don't think we should have a historical thing, preservation committee. If you're talking about a pile of bricks eight feet by ten feet, and you're going to preserve these things, there, there should be restrictions. I don't want the town to take and distort the economics behind development for the sake of saving a barn or the Widow's Walk or something that's not economically practical. And I would really think a better idea to leave this historical preservation thing off the table. So, the environment, the state will take care of that, you've got enough rules there. I don't want to preserve a bunch of junk. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public comment. Do I have a motion?
Public comment?
Second.
Discussion? Dan, can you identify for us the kinds of communities? You said it's, it's not particularly broad.
That have this capacity?
Yes.
Um, the city of Portland and the city of Saco both do, in our area. I think those are the only communities that have either what they call municipal capacity, which means local ordinances are, are good enough or meet the needs of the state, or delegated authority, which means site law is still reviewed, it's just reviewed by the town, so the rules of site law are reviewed by the town. So those are the two towns that I'm aware of in our vicinity that have this ability.
Am I correct that this is a transfer of responsibility as opposed to an expansion of responsibility?
It's, it's actually a finding that site law criteria doesn't need to be met at all, because the town's ordinances are equal to the intent of the site law rules. So we're not actually acting as the state.
State, state's site law.
Yes, state rules. So we're not acting as a state, we've been found by the state to have adequate rules to essentially uphold...
So it eliminates that step in the development process?
It eliminates that step, correct. Which can be a six month step, and a twenty to fifty thousand dollar step for applicants.
Just if I could dovetail, Dan's being entirely too modest. A lot of the reason that we're in a position to obtain this municipal capacity has to do with Dan and his staff, and frankly, the, the quality of the ordinances that largely he's the author of. So he should take, and be given a lot of credit for putting us in this position.
Sir?
I wasn't going to talk, but Ron Mazer, I'm on the planning board, as well as the transportation committee and the pedestrian committee, so I got a vested interest. But I just want to echo what Tom just said, when any of these projects come before the planning board, we take very seriously the ordinances that exist now. And to emphasize what, what the purpose is, is to make it a streamline for anybody, for an applicant who comes to the town and saves them a great deal of expense. And talking with Dan and staff, it's expensive for somebody that, to go up to Augusta and have this site plan on their shoulders, as opposed to the way we do. But I want to assure the council that the ordinances that we have are probably the toughest and best, and yet the fairest in the area.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Is there any more questions, Dan? Comments?
Councilor Holbrook? I would just like to offer one friendly amendment, in which is to accept the document you have in front of you, which is essentially the same document you had before, so you're, I believe this one is the four oh five zoning ordinance. The only one change that comes to you in this document is just on that ending piece about the historical sites. You'll see it's highlighted in yellow. There was intention to bring in, it was just taking the wording a little bit to better reflect that the outreach for a contractor to do would be, or for the planning board, would be to have the historic society play an advisory role to them about just what's, you know, important about these little sites, locations, especially when you're talking site, you know, subdivision, you know, if, if we can have wiggle room with there so that they could just be talking to each other. It doesn't create, there was concern before that the way it was worded, it kind of made it sound like they were the authoritative figure behind what this, and they're just looking to have more of an advisory role with town staff, so.
Just procedurally, your amendment may not be necessary. My impression of your motion, which I think you made, was that you were moving this version. But if that's not, if that's not the original motion, then amendment would be required.
I...
Can move the march fifth version instead of the version that was in your packet.
Yes, yes, so the one that's in front of us today, that's what you got tonight. Yeah.
So if that's the case, I don't think an amendment's required, it's already active in front of the council by, by virtue of your initial motion.
All right, and if your amendment were drawn?
I withdraw my...
In a second?
I don't think any seconds.
I thought I heard a second.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Well, if I've made it...
Okay, back to the original motion.
Do I have a comment?
Yes. I'm still in that comment phase.
Um, so this is certainly just the first step of many, as you know, historic preservation has been trying to really look at what we can do to help encourage, and certainly, as the direction of the council was, that the point is to encourage, it was not to require it or enforce it or strong on it, it was just to do everything possible that we could to make sure that we've really looked at what we have that's important and significant. I, I do appreciate, you know, that there is some concern that we would be saving junk. I assure you, what we're looking at on the list, we had a first crack presentation to you guys of kind of what we were looking at. These sites are absolutely historically significant, you know, the Winsler Homer Home, you know, there's the Woolly Man meth site, there's a lot of things that are, you know, Scarborough for a long time unfortunately has had that, well, you just bulldoze it and oh well kind of attitude, and there should be some things that are left somewhat sacred, and the town should do everything humanly possible to try to preserve it without enforcing it upon people and to make it as easy as possible as we can. So Dan has been extremely helpful to the committee in this, and it's his language that has made this portion possible. And you'll be have, all three documents coming up will have the similar thing where it's just that one tweak in the wording, but certainly, this is hopefully only the first step of many, many other good ideas to come. So again, it just creates an advisory role to find out what's significant about, about the property.
From what I'm hearing around town, there's quite a bit of interest in historical preservation. I hear people come up to me all the time about it and, and say that they're glad that the town finally is doing something about it. They wish that the Widow's Walk could have been saved long before it fell into disrepair and wasn't worth saving. So maybe we can change things around with saving some of these historical buildings before they get so bad that they're a pile of junk. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? None?
Order number fourteen twenty-five is a first reading and scheduled public hearing on the proposed amendment to chapter four oh five D, the site plan review ordinance to add historic preservation and wildlife review standards to enable municipal capacity of DEP site law review.
Public comment? Anyone like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, close public comment? Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Still moved and seconded? Comments?
I'll give another comment. Again, certainly this is just, it goes dovetail with the rest of it, that just says, kind of like we were talking about before. The first historic piece of it is just to encourage it and take a better look at it, especially as it comes in front of the planning board for site plan review, to just have a more thorough look and thought about what might be on that parcel.
Anyone else? Down that end of the table? Nothing, huh? Nothing going on, huh?
Exactly.
Up there? No, I guess so. Okay. Um, all those in favor? Opposed?
Order number fourteen dash twenty-six is a first reading and schedule a public hearing on the proposed amendment to chapter four oh six, the subdivision ordinance to add historic preservation and wildlife review standards to enable municipal capacity of DEP site law review.
And once again, any from, one from the public would like to speak on this? Anybody? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
Prove up. Second.
Discussion. Want to do this one again?
Sure. Uh, just to go back again, it's the advisory, and I guess I'm, I will change my, I'll change it up a little bit. I'll read the last line, how's that? Um, "If the resource will be removed, the applicant must demonstrate that reasonable efforts have been made to preserve the resource value and relocate it to another section." So, again, just to my point, um, there's some language in here that if it's not worth saving and it can't be saved, you know, you can go.
Guys are all quiet down there, nothing still?
They're sleeping.
Okay. Seeing no comments from the council, um, we're going to, uh, take a vote? All those in favor? Opposed?
Order number fourteen dash twenty-seven is act on the annual seasonal road postings for weight restrictions if necessary from February twenty-fifth to May fifteenth.
As hard as it may be to believe, uh, the frost will be coming out of the ground soon. Um, and so, this is an annual rite of passage, if you will. Um, but this is a, I don't mean to make light of it, it's very important to protect the integrity of our roads.
Tom, why is it that we have, why does the town council have to approve something like this?
Well, I believe it has to do, uh, this isn't, in fact, affects commerce. Uh, this doesn't allow trucks to be on the roads, and so, I think it's important that the council, the legislative body, uh, takes a formal vote that will, that effectively restricts, uh, the right of commerce and trucks to be on the, to traverse our roads.
Thank you.
Motion? So moved?
Second.
Thank you. I don't believe there's any discussion, is there, on this?
Uh-uh.
Oh, there is. Whoa. What's your, um...
Is living on a road that gets one of these postings, I would like to, and I don't know how to go about it, I would like to see these cowboy orange signs larger.
Okay.
If you're going down the road, you almost can't read them.
Okay.
I'll check into it.
Good observation.
Uh, there seems to be some standardization as I think about traveling around different, different towns. I see similar signs, but I'll see if we have the ability to put larger ones.
Anyone up there? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Order number fourteen twenty-eight is act on the request to authorize the town manager to sign and accept the sewer easement with the Seeridge subdivision homeowners association.
Tom?
Uh, you caught me flat footed.
Oh, I'll give you a minute.
No, no, quit all right. Uh, this is, uh, simply a housekeeping matter, picking up on something that we thought was done. Uh, it, uh, has the council affirm or approve, uh, an easement for the purpose of having a sanitary sewer system exist within the public right of way in the Seeridge subdivision. Uh, this was always intended to be the case, I think it just fell through the cracks. And, um, I think we became aware of it, uh, as this project was purchased by, um, a new developer who was kind of scrutinized all the paperwork, and again, it's just housekeeping.
Do I have a motion? So moved? Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, standing in special committees, start with Counselor Blaze.
Um, earlier this week, Bud Hanson, the chairman of the senior advisory board, uh, Ellie Hodge, who's the senior, uh...
Coordinator.
Coordinator for programs, senior program coordinators, and myself, met with Andrea Killard, uh, who's the, um, marketing director at Piper Shores, along with, uh, Nate Catch, who is the community services director over there. Uh, we just sat down and we discussed, like problems, like goals, um, how can we help each other? Um, and it was amazing, five minutes into the meeting, it was quite evident that both sides wanted to help each other, and that, uh, hopefully something new will be born as far as improving services to our seniors through Piper Shores, through expanding the, uh, services of the town. So, um, it was just a start, but I'll keep you posted as to things that will transpire.
Hey, thank you. Counselor Benedict.
Um, excuse me, had, uh, no meetings on the committees that I'm on in February, goes to waters, but there is one next Tuesday night, so I will be with that, that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Holbrook.
Uh, well, as you see, there's part of, um, historic preservation was here this evening. Um, so, they did meet last night, um, bulk of the conversation was around this, and, um, they are working on, um, some other ideas. Those will be at the next meeting, which will be March twentieth, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong committee, um, April eighth at six thirty P.M. Uh, there's been some concepts, and again, Dan Bearden's been very helpful in helping us kind of try to figure out how to craft the language for it. Um, there's some concepts about, um, possible density bonuses, um, for some of these sites. If they realize and keep the parts that's historic about it, maybe having some kind of bonus that makes it more enticing to the developer to want to keep it, um, and an incentive to do it. Um, so there's some talk around that. Um, again, the list is ever-changing and evolving, and argued about, about what's significant, um, you know, spend the eye in the beholder a little bit, so, um, still trudging away on the list. Um, I do want to mention that that committee is looking for members, um, very, very specifically. Um, we did have one member resign, which leaves us a little short, um, for members. So, if there's any interest in the community, um, to help out with the historic preservation, um, your help would be greatly appreciated. Um, and as always, there are openings on several committees. Um, you can get a link right online on the town website to fill out an application. Um, Housing Alliance has its next meeting on March twentieth at six thirty, and, yeah, that's it for today's on the floor.
Counselor Donovan. Uh, the finance committee met with the school board finance committee, and, and that was a very productive discussion. Uh, was very, uh, pleased to hear their attitudes, uh, they were, it was a very cooperative and a good exchange, because I thought it was a candid exchange about, uh, the tax situation in the town and the factors that were involved. And so, I think the townspeople will appreciate knowing that, uh, this finance committee is working at those, those tax issues, and that's going to be a very busy period for the next several months. And I want to, uh, I want to personally thank the, um, the council for hanging in there on the, uh, on the dog issue. It really is not easy when it requires constant adjustments to understand and accept compromises that are complicated. Uh, and in this case, I think the flexibility and willingness of the council to, to keep working with me on those was really commendable. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Counselor Catarina.
Uh, the only meeting I've been to since la, our last meeting is the Cog Regional Policy Forum, and basically, I can only hope they can do this, but rather than just sitting around writing reports, we'll actually act on a few of them, um, and try to attract some resources so that we can get, uh, some things done. Um, 'cause I know, I know personally, there've been things in that committee that have been around for twenty-some odd years that's still sitting around, so, they're going to be sorry they invited me to be on that committee, but that's another story. Um, Long Range Planning Committee is this Friday morning at eight, and we're looking at, um, some, uh, planning around Gorm Road, near where I live, about anywhere I live, the golf course, and what we can do there. And the Conservation Commission is meeting on Monday at, we're moving it up to, I believe, six o'clock. Uh, and again, we've been asked to look at some potential, um, subdivisions and whatnot that are maybe coming down the pike, so.
Hey, thank you. Uh, my report was already done on the transportation committee tonight, so they made it easy. Um, unfortunately, uh, Counselor Sinclair is homesick and was able to, was unable to attend, uh, today's, um, ordinance committee meeting, and tonight's workshop and council meeting, and she said she's very, very sorry, and, but she just can't help it, she's sick. So, what was, uh, covered at the committee meeting today was cell phone towers, cell phone coverage in Scarborough. We've hired a consultant that is looking at areas of coverage in the town that is lacking, and, uh, the providers are very interested in working with, uh, with the town and with the, uh, um, report that's going to be out, um, for coverage to try to help as best they can to reinstate, uh, good coverage around town. So, that, that's pretty exciting. Uh, it was a lengthy meeting, there was a lot of public comment at the meeting, um, and, uh, I think we learned a lot. Uh, we also, uh, spoke about, uh, medical marijuana, facilities that already exist in town, um, and how to better manage them, um, you know, through, you know, through our ordinances. And, um, we had quite a few public, you know, people come up and, public comments, some from experience, and, uh, some gave us some advice as to, uh, uh, things that we should be looking at in our ordinance. Uh, so it was, uh, pretty educational. And then the, uh, last thing was, uh, we updated our, um, traffic ordinance, which will be coming to you to more mirror, um, what the state, uh, recommends in the wording to, uh, bring, you know, both, uh, our ordinances, uh, in line with the state. We also spoke about the parking on the Pine Point Road, and, uh, a possible solution that'll come for the council, um, in, in the parking ordinance, the, out of the adjustments that were made to that. And, um, the, the only way that we're going to find out, um, whether this will work is to try it for summer and see if that, what we decide to do alleviates the problem down there. So, that will do it for my comments, so it's on to, um, Town Manager's report.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick points of interest, uh, working with the council chair, and you'll see you have copies of the financial audit and financial reports. Uh, it was slightly delayed this year, but I think still in time where we can get a presentation and consume that document before we get involved in budget. Um, to that end, we are looking to arrange a joint workshop with the school board, which is traditional for the, for the presentation of the audit, um, and that will be before your next meeting, that's March nineteenth. We haven't finalized the time, but I'm guessing it'll be in the six fifteen range. Uh, we usually need a bit more than half an hour to get through it. Uh, again, a reminder, uh, next week, March thirteen, uh, here in these chambers, the Scarborough Land Trust will be holding its annual meeting, and you've got a preview of the sort of subjects they'll cover. Um, everyone I've attended, I've been astounded, these chambers are full, uh, so it's a real testament to how interested this community and committed they are to, uh, to this cause of conservation. I also provide the council an update on winter operations through our public works department. Should come as no surprise, uh, it's been a harsh winter, our budgets show that. Uh, looked, simplistically, looking at, uh, how we compare this year to last year, we're about twenty-five percent up, uh, for winter operations. Frankly, all things considered, uh, I'm pretty happy about that being where we're at, and we've made arrangements elsewhere in the public works budget to compensate for those, uh, over expenditures in those particular lines. And lastly, just a plug for community services, uh, last year, they took over passport duties, and, uh, last year, they held their first inaugural passport day, and, uh, this year, it's scheduled for this coming Saturday, March eighth, eight to ten, here at Town Hall, and it's kind of a blitz. It's an opportunity for folks to come in on the weekend hours, uh, when it's perhaps more convenient, uh, to get their passports. And, uh, I don't know how many we processed last year, but it clearly was a success, and we look for a similar turnout. So, again, this Saturday, ten to three, uh, come here to Town Hall, and we'll help you process your passport. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor comments? We'll start with Counselor Holbrook.
Um, I have two comments this evening. Um, the first one is, um, I know there was some interest, um, from some folks about, um, the clink bags, the town does have clink bags, and we have another order of a hundred boxes that are in, so if you're interested in collecting a bag or two, um, all the proceeds will go to the, um, Project Grace Fuel Assistance Fund that we partner up with every year, so, um, there are more bags here at Town Hall.
They're right in the clerk's office, so they're easy to get.
Feel free to grab some, if you'd like some. Um, and then, just, um, one, I, I don't have, I'll do the full list of condolences at the next meeting, but, um, I do have one, um, Olaf Alquist passed away. Um, he was not a lifetime resident, but certainly a longtime resident. He grew up here, he was one of, one of the siblings of my grandmother. Um, his brother Clarence recently passed away as well. Um, but again, um, grew up actually in the house I live in, so, um, again, I'd like to extend my condolences to the family. And then that, that's it for me.
Thank you. Counselor Donovan.
I would like to applaud Community Service, the representative, uh, who does the passports up there. Uh, I had a lost passport, some gentleman in Naples, Italy has my passport. At the moment, and so, they, they walked me through that process very, very professionally, so I really appreciated it.
Good, thank you. Ah, good one, Bill. Um, Counselor Catarina.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, I'd like to congratulate the Scarborough Academic Decathlon team. I believe that this was their twenty-fifth win. I know it was their tenth consecutive win. Uh, I'm partial to the team because my daughter is an alum of the team, so I was very excited to see that, and I did go to Super Quiz and, uh, watched the kids win. And they are trying to raise money to go to the Nationals. The Nationals are in Honolulu, Hawaii. I happened to go to Honolulu in, I don't know, two thousand and six or seven, they went to Honolulu then also. But obviously, it takes a lot of money, so, um, you can contact, Shane Davis is a Latin teacher at the high school, and he has, um, he's doing the fundraising, he's their coach. Um, I had a council meeting at Dunston Station, I had six people came, and I believe we had a fruitful conversation. It's great to have face to face, uh, with folks about issues and whatever, so I thanked them all for coming. They were happy because I had coffee and donuts for them. Um, speaking of clink bags, I am now being called the bag lady here at Town Hall. I've given out...
Effectively, Jim.
I have given out probably thirty-five clink bags, I bring them with me. I don't happen to have any, and I forgot to bring them, but I usually have them wherever I go and, uh, force them upon people. No, I don't do that, but, um, you know, I appreciate people taking them because, as Jessica said, it's helping our neighbors in need, uh, with the Fuel Assistance Fund, and it doesn't take very, well, with my house, it doesn't take very long to fill a clink bag, so, uh, thank you for that. That's it.
Uh, Counselor Benedict.
Very quiet tonight.
I've noticed that.
You told me to be.
Well, we want to try to get through this.
Okay, I'm done.
Counselor Blaze.
Um, I'd just like to, again, thank the ad hoc committee, uh, for a wonderful job that they did. That was one, one big project. That was one, one big project. And they're, based upon where we started to where we ended up, you could see all the different possibilities just floating all over the place. I'm glad everybody hung in there. I know after the last workshop, a lot of people were upset. But I think in the end, what came out tonight was a very, very positive resolution. And I think we've got a year ahead of us that we can take a look and, and see whether we can make a difference in our pulver population and yet still provide off-leash time for the dog owners. And I'd like to especially thank Bill Donovan for all the hours that he put in after the ad hoc committee. Thank you, Bill, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, I'm up. I'd like to, my condolences go out to Jessica and the Alquist family. And I'd like to thank the ad hoc committee for all the hard work that they put in, in effort. I know there was a lot of hours spent and have to remember that our town manager was there also. So I thank you too for all the time you took away from me to be there at those meetings and facilitate them. And you also, Bill, I know you put in a lot of time when you, you have a big project going on on your hands and your private life. So, you know, I'm not saying that everybody else doesn't, but I'm on top of your council duty, so it's greatly appreciated. I think, I'm hoping that what came out tonight is going to be, I guess, somewhat, met with somewhat of a positive light and, and accepted. And like we said, you know, once we get through a year of that, we'll know better how it works and how the community is, deals with it. And if it, and if it, it may work well, time will, time will have to tell on that part. So with that, I'm going to call for adjournment. Motion? All those in favor?
Aye.